Radha Radha everyone. Welcome to our daily wisdom from Bhagwad Kiita session. Nithinji Radha Radha over to you.
Uddhavani ji. Radha Radha good morning, good evening everyone. Hope you had a wonderful weekend, happy Valentine's to all of you. Happy. Gopi. As we. Dove tail. This also to spirituality. Hope you all are doing good, so we will be getting started today we will pick up a. I won't say interesting but. Fascinating topic, love. Being to Valentine's Day, we are perfectly able to coincide it with Madhure Bhav which was pending. I don't think we'll be able to get to Madhure Bhav today. We will do a bit of tilling of the soil even before we get into Madhure Bhav. Let's dissect the definition of love to begin with. And then we will get into the deeper philosophical concepts around the Madhure Bhav as explained in our scriptures. So let's get started, I'm going to share my screen. We'll do our opening prayers and then we'll get started. So by the way, I picked up a shloka, different shloka, I know you've been reciting the same shloka over and over again. So if you're brave enough and if you think you can pull it off, go for it. But I picked up a different shloka today and we'll set the context for that as well. Give me a sec, I'm going to share my screen. Alright, are you able to see my screen now?
Yes.
Wonderful. I hope the audio video is cooperating, if it doesn't, Uddhavani ji you know what to do so. Alright, we started then. Guru Brahma Guru Vasnu Guru Devo Maheshwarha. Guru Sakshat Parabrahma Tasmay Shri Guruge Namah. Vasudev Sudam Devam Kamsa Chaanur Madanam. Devakhi Paramanandam Krishnam Vandee Jagat Gurum. Krishnam Vandee Jagat Gurum. Radha Radha, good morning, good evening everyone. So today I picked up a shloka. Just to bring in a little more context, just give me a sec. Sorry about that, yeah, just to bring in some additional context to what we are discussing. So that we can appreciate a little more why we are talking about all these bhavs. And the significance from God's standpoint. So. Let me pull up the shloka. It is from chapter 11 verse 24. And it is recited a little differently. Let me do that and then if you feel confident enough, please feel free to raise your hand and and take it on as well. Nabhasprisham Deepmanekavarnam Vyataanam Deepvishalnetram. Dristvaheetvam Pravyathitanta Ratma Dhritimnavindamishamam Chavishno. Alright, do you have any qualities, want to take this on? Wonderful Uddhaji, Radha Radha.
Uddhaji, please go ahead.
Yeah, Radha Radha, I think it's difficult, let me try here. Nabhasprisham Deepam Aneekavarnam Vyataanam Deepvishalnetram. Dristvaheetvam Pravyatitanta Ratma Dritamnavindamishamam Chavishno. Very nice, well tried, thank you very much, Uddhaji, well tried for your. Yeah, I know it's a little difficult one plus. I didn't give a heads up, right, that's what I'm going to pick up.
Ashutosh ji, please go ahead.
Ashutosh ji. Radha Radha. Radha Radha. Nabhasprisam Deepmanekavarnam Vyataanam Deepvishalnetram. Dristvaheetvam Pravyatitanta Ratma Dhritinnavindamishamam Chavishno. Very nice, Ashutosh ji, you you continue to get credit for the singing that you did, so very nice. See if you sing one bhajan, I think we are set for 10 shlokas, so that's how powerful it is. Okay, let's take a few more hands.
Yes, we do have few hands.
By the way, this Friday, Minuji is starting up with her recitation class. So to get the nuances of shloka and get in order to get its spot right. Strongly encourage you to join her classes, so maybe Uddhavani ji you can talk a little bit about that later on. But let's continue that, I just wanted to let you know on that.
Shali ji, I I just wanted to give it to Shali ji because, Shali ji please go ahead.
Radha Radha Nithinji.
Radha Radha Shali ji.
Nabhasprisham Deepmanekavarnam Vyataanam Deepvishalnetram. Dristvaheetvam Pravyatitanta Ratma Dritamnavindamishamam Chavishno.
Very nice, Shali ji, Radha Radha.
Yeah, actually the reason I took Shali ji first was because we were, we were, we are all students of Minuji, we all learned from her. So I just thought, since you brought up that Nithinji, I just thought I'll take her also first.
Okay, okay, thanks for clarifying, it was not favoritism, thank you.
Nithinji, in the, Nithinji, I would like to share like a couple of minutes, can I take it, Nithinji, at this point of time?
120 seconds, yes, please go for it.
Actually regarding the recitation session, like what Minuji is having. Like we really learn lot from the session, like with nuances of pronunciation. And we feel really very blissful and I would say like before starting the session, I knew only from chapter four. Yada yada paritrana yada shloka alone, but now I feel so confident to recite any verse. So that gives us the feel of confidence once we join the sessions and practice. So I just wanted to bring it up here and thanks for the opportunity, Nithinji to you.
Thank you, Shali ji, yes, I would second that, it's a great opportunity to solidify your pronunciation. And Minuji is a wonderful, wonderful teacher and as you can see, Shali ji, you know, when she recites, it flows like a river, so. Thank you, Shali ji, for pointing that out and do avail that opportunity, maybe you can post the link for the sessions, Uddhavani ji, that way. Whoever is interested, they can take an opportunity for that.
Sure, sure, thank you.
Alright, let's take a few more hands.
Yes, Shamji, please go ahead.
Radha Radha. Radha Radha Shamji. Nabhasprisham Deepmanekavarnam Vyataanam Deepvishalnetram. Dristvaheetvam Pravyathitantrama Dhritinnavindamishamachavishno Radha Radha. Very nice, Shamji. Pravyathitanta Ratma, that was the only thing you got, but other than that, very nicely done for your first try, wonderfully. Okay, maybe a few more hands and then we'll get started, see today's Valentine's Day. So we're going to spend a good amount of time on love, okay, on this topic, so let's take maybe a couple more hands and then we'll get started.
Okay, I see some new names, I'll just give them.
Sure, if you have new names, even better.
Yes. Rinaldi, Rinaldi Radha Radha.
Radha Radha.
Radha Radha is an old timer, but probably she's reciting for the first time, yes, Rinaldi, go ahead.
Uddhavani ji. Nabhasprisham Deepmanekavarnam Vyataanam Deepvishalnetram. Dristvaheetvam Pravyathitanta Ratma Dhritinnavindamishamam Chavishno.
Very nice, ji Radha Radha, good to hear you.
Thank you, Rinaldi, yeah, good to hear you.
Thank you, Uddhavani ji, thank you, Nithi.
Thank you so much, okay, do we have any real?
Yes, Rajini ji.
Yes, Rajini ji.
Radha Radha. Nabhaspru- Nabhasprusham Deepmanekavarnam Vyataanam Deepvishalnetram. Dristvaheetvam Pravyatitanta Ratma Dhritinnavindatma Shanchavishno.
Very nice, Rajini ji, well tried, alright, we'll take two more hands and then we'll get started.
Okay. Sumeshi, please go ahead.
Radha Radha. Radha Radha. Radha Radha everyone. Nabhasprisam Deepmanekavarnam Vyataanam Deepvishalnetram. Dristvaheetvam Pravyathitanta Ratma Dhritimnavindamishamam Chavishno Radha Radha.
Radha Radha, very nice, thank you very much. Okay, maybe.
Rupa ji, go ahead please.
Radha Radha everyone.
Radha Radha Rupa ji.
Nabhasprisham Deepmanekavarnam Vyataanam Deepvishalnetram. Dristvaheetvam Pravyatitanta Ratma Dhritinnavindamishamam Chavishno.
Very nice, thank you so much, okay, we see one more hand, so we can take real quick and then we'll get started.
Golak ji, please go ahead.
Radha Radha everyone.
Radha Radha.
Drista, Dristaya, Dhitang Pravyathitanta Ratma Dhritinnavindamishamam Chavishno. Radha Radha.
Thank you so much, Golak ji, alright, so let's get started. So this shloka, in case you are wondering, why did we make a quick jump? We've been doing 4-3, which introduces Sakhavahav and we took that opportunity to go through the remaining bhavs as well. I picked up this shloka because. Why is it important to build a personal relationship with God? So this brings in that other perspective around it, so this, this is in chapter 11 verse 24. In which Lord Krishna has actually. Shown Arjun his Vishwa Sarupam, his cosmic form. And on seeing that, Arjun says, Lord Vishnu seeing your form touching the sky. Effulgent in many colors with mouths wide open and enormous blazing eyes. My heart is trembling with fear, I have lost all courage and peace of mind. Now just imagine, if you see God in front of you and you see how grand God is. All the people, you know, the call itself is God. Going inside his mouth in due course of time and on the other hand, people coming out, all kind of species emanating from him, we don't know. The cosmic form, the ability that Lord gave Arjun to see him in his true form. How grand it was and how fearsome it turned out to be for normal person that you know, seeing with those divine eyes. And the only thing, that the only emotion that can be evoked at that time is fear. That is what Arjun was feeling, Arjun is, was not an ordinary soul. His heart started trembling with fear and what he's stating or bet him is. I have lost all courage and peace of mind. Now what are we going to do with a god who is going to freak us out? I think it's, it can only invoke, invoke fear and any devotion. Based out of fear is not true devotion. Shimachi explains very nicely, that's a very starting point of a low level of devotion where we are god fearing people. So it's a three step process, first you start becoming god acknowledging. You start believing in divinity that there is a supreme power. Then the next progression is you may start becoming god fearing that, okay, if we do something bad, you know, we'll get a back. Karmic back from god, so god fearing is the next emotion which is again a low level of devotion. And god loving is the topmost highest level of devotion where you, where you simply engage in love with god. And that is the reason goddess, if god's purpose was to invoke devotion in our hearts. By showing his cosmic form or by impressing us or by. You know, invoking any other, any other emotion other than love. Then it would have been a different game, ball game altogether, right, that's not the idea. He wants us to build a connect with him and that is why he's, when he descends on this earth. In his Bhagwan form and his avatar, he gives us the basis for devotion. And all the five bhavs that we are talking about. Maternal, fraternal, beloved, all that stuff is based, the foundation for that is love. It's not that I'm scared of you because you seem so grand and you can finish me off like that, that's not the idea at all. And that's, that's really mercy of god, he gives us all those emotions. And if we look at some of his lelas, divine pastimes. Even when he lifted the, let's the chart that we are going through, so Madhure Bhav is the closest one as you can see. So with his friends also, when Lord, this he had lifted the Govardhan Hill. They could not actually accept the fact that he's god and he's lifting the entire hill by his finger, he, they simply looked upon him as their friends. So those fraternal sentiments were there. But when Lord Indra came to apologize to Lord Krishna and his friends saw that. That's when they started feeling, oh, he's by the way someone special, he's god, that's what people are saying. And god, actually he doesn't relishes that. And when you have that formality, that respect, that distance. That's not the idea, so he made them, he made them forget through his yoga maya power. That's what he used to do even with mother Rishudha whenever she would see his, you know, grandness or the divinity in his personality. So gods. One of the. Prime purpose of his dissension is to give us the bhavs, the basis for devotion. Through which we can build a personal connect with him. Like Arjun is trembling with fear and in fact, he goes on to request. Lord Krishna that, okay, I cannot take this form anymore, can you come back to your two armed form? Back to your two armed form, because that is how he could build relationship with him, that is how he could actually task him. For this job of driving his chariot, if he had known he had god, he is god, you think he would have done that, no way. And that is what god wants, he wants to leave his ashwara part aside. That's where Brajara starts from Dasse Bhav, forget about my ashwara bhav. And let's build a relationship and the good thing is each jive, each soul, individual soul. Seven billion on this planet and much more billion in other universes has that opportunity to do that. Everybody's special from god's standpoint. Because he says, mamay vancho jive, okay, you are my eternal fragmental parts. And being our supreme father, he's more than happy to wrap his hands and arms around us. As long as we are willing to accept him as our father. And that is where all these bhavs come into picture. So today we are going to talk about, like I said, today being. Valentine. Before we get into Madhure Bhav, this is an advanced topic, let's do a bit of a tilling of the ground. Do the boot camp around what love is and then we'll get into Madhure Bhav. Possibly tomorrow, because I don't think we'll be able to get to it today. So let's get into. Some of the discussion around love. As you can see, it's, it's a universal emotion. It drives the entire world. Including animal species as well. If you look at any of the animal species, the way they protect their kids. You know, there's something to learn from it as well. And the level of detachment they have as well, as well, you know, even the sparrows, they leave their kids after a while, humans don't do that. They continue to become helicopter parents. And then they have their grandkids and super grandfids if god would permit them, that continues. So love anyway, it's a governing emotion, if you go, look at it from people. From a relationship standpoint, as you can see with your parents, with your grandparents, with your relatives, with your spouse, with your kids. And so this, this emotion is pretty powerful. And it drives this universe and nobody can escape this emotion in whatever form they relate to it. So today we are going to discuss, what is the definition of love? What is love actually? And. What is true love? We keep hearing about this concept, true love. Trying to find that true love in our life, soulmate, true love and all that stuff. So we are going to have a bit of a discussion around that, I want to give a quick. It's a bit of a tour from my first, what do you call that awakening to this concept of love? Okay, in my school, so I remember when we would leave our. Classes, right, the school is done in 12th class. Typically, we, we go around with our scrapbooks and start asking questions. And I did the same, okay, to one of my classmates, I went around with my scrapbook and asking, okay, can you please tell me what love is? And to my utter dismay, what she wrote was. You know, loss of valuable energy. You know, and I was like, I was less heartbroken but more amused because she had given me a very revolutionary definition. Which I could have never imagined. It's a different matters, she had absolutely no interest to write that, but I said, it's a pretty interesting definition, you can go with. But then, I mean, I didn't stick around with that definition, it was kind of amusing for me. For too long, because then Bollywood comes along, right, it, it starts giving you, feeding you the definition of its own kind of a thing, I still have friends by the way. Who still are stuck in the time warp of DDLJ and Mohabbiti and all those, you know, fun candy floss movies that would come. So, but it was not until I met Swamiji, when this concept really started making sense. And it really simplified the life, okay, for a lot of people around me as well. Keep on talking about true love and that fantasy world and all that stuff, yes, love does exist, but it's, it goes much deeper than how we think about it. So that is what we are going to discuss and what is true love, so let's look at it. From our scriptural standpoint. Scriptural, it's, it's called Shastra Chakshu, we are going to apply to it. Okay, not what any director producer would make us believe, we'll just look at it directly from the source. So it says there are three kinds of manifestations of this world called love. What are those, the first is lust, calm, that is explained. The second one is business, veypar. Barter, trade off. And the third one is love, actual love, preem. We spoke about prema shakti, the shant bhav and the sadhana niggati aspect of it, they reach that level. So let's look at it a little more in detail. What, what each one of these entails truly? So the first one is lust, calm, that is purely based on. Take, 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 that is called lust. Where the sole objective of getting into a relationship is to keep on taking something out of it. Because that serves your self-interest, that is your only objective in that relationship. And that is called lust. So if you are able to extrapolate that, it could happen in any, any relationship typically reasonable people. They, they employ both give and take, but there are people who, who may just resort to exploitation alone. And it, it can actually, you can extrapolate that concept to corporates as well. So even when you talk about corporates. If your employee employer relationship is just about profit making and nothing else, that is also. This kind of, they, they actually may pretend to care for you, but that's not the case. In fact, we'll get little more into that when we go to that subsequent slides, but the point here is any relationship. That we get into whether it's friends, spouse, relatives, if the objective is just stake out of that relationship, it falls into this category. So it's not just limited to. Sensual desires alone. The scriptures inform us that it is the seeking nature or the intention behind it. Where you are just focused on your serving yourself interest alone. That is called lust, the first manifestation of what we think of as love. So what is this, so as we saw, there are three, so the second one is. Business, which is called veypar. We're already conversant with this term, we know, right, it is trade off, you give something, you get something back. And that is called veypar. So it is, it is reciprocity, reciprocity based, we are give and take, give and take, that is business. Such relationship is called a barter, in previous time when there was no currency, it used to be a barter system, okay, you keep my. Pigeon and I'll take your goat or you take my goat and I'll take the milk or whatever. That is like, okay, I'll give you something or there's a tacit implied. Understanding that, alright, there is a mutual give and take. Okay, if you do this, I get this, if you do this, you get that kind of deal, which is called veypar. And the third one is truly frame that we are talking about. It is a very deeper concept in which the goal is to give, give and only give. It's in giving that you get that concept, it's a very deeper scriptural concept where your focus is to give. And it's not conditional, where you will give only when you'll get something back. Now the goal in this one is to serve and give happiness to the other, to the beloved. That is true love, that is the definition of true love. It is exceedingly rare and sublime. In material world, we can get close to it, but not quite, not possible. And it is called divine love also, because in Narak Bhakti version, it is referred to as where you, the only goal is to serve the beloved. Tat suk sukhitvam, that means in your happiness lies my happiness. It's a very, very exceedingly rare and sublime because it's a function of a pure heart. We cannot employ it unless we are pure, it's just not possible. Now in the world, in all the relationships. Actually, so yeah, the third one I was talking about, so it's in serving, one gets served and it in giving one. One receives, that is the basis of this relationship. Now if the world, if you look at it, it, it invariably falls into the first two categories. The worldly relationships, whoever you are operating with, whoever, it's a pretty strong word. We'll have to do a bit of an introspection and think deeply about it because it doesn't come very naturally, it's like, no, 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 I'm a giver. No, the day your self-interest will be impeded in any relationship. That will, the dynamics will start changing, the foundation will start crumbling. And that self-interest could be in any form, which you might acknowledge, which you may not acknowledge, it might be subtle in our mind as well, right? There are certain expectations out of every relationship. And the day those expectations. Are not met or somebody starts. You know, just withdrawing and not making deposits. That foundation will start crumbling, you may put up with that relation. Again, because of some self-interest, you may need security, you may need some kind of a sense of belongingness somewhere. Some incentive would be there. But the day our self-interest is hampered in any relationship, that's it, now you are just putting up. And that is how it goes, the world operates because typically people are sensible. And they will try to strike a balance between the deposits and the withdrawal, it's like a bank balance. You make deposits in a relationship and then you withdraw something out of it. If you keep on withdrawing. It will become an overdraft one day and finally somebody will raise their hands. So that bell and balance for as long as it is maintained. The relationships continue to flourish, the day that imbalance starts happening. There will be strains in relationship where you think your self-interest has now taken dominance over others, that's where conflicts start happening. And that is because it is transactional, it is conditional. There's a beautiful story Swamiji, in one of his videos he was selling, it reminds me, you know, this husband wife, they had a very. You know, kind of an argument and altercation in one of the evenings and then. They had a big fight and this guy, he's so upset, he said, though, okay, I'm going to go out of the house and just. Get into my car, just sleep there only. So after a couple of hours, the wife's temper had cooled down. And she's, she felt, you know, let me just go and poor guy, he, he went out in his car, let me at least give him water. So that he cools down and you know, we can patch up things. Because her temper had cooled down, so she goes. She was being considerate on her part, she takes a water bottle and goes and knocks on the car. And hands over the water bottle to him, opens the door and hands over the water bottle to him. Apparently this guy is. Apparently this guy's temper had still not cooled down, okay, his thresh, probably he was much more furious than she was. He took the bottle and threw back at her. Now, because he threw back at her, she got upset. Now I'm trying to make up and look at this guy. So even then, she was actually catering to her need. It was purely compassion. Obviously, it's, it's a very high deep thought about it. But then again, she got upset. Now you would say, would she get upset because that, because of that guy? No, she was thinking, no, I'm being nice, I'm being kind, I'm trying to do that. How can this guy not do that? Again, it was impeded what she thought how things would get patched up. And from her own standpoint, she was trying to do something good. That got hindered. Again, she picked a fight and they were fighting with him. So that is how our relationships go. That delicate balance for as long as it is maintained, it continues in every relationship. The day that balance starts getting disturbed, there will be problems. And the closest, like I said, our scriptures say, any relationship in this world that can get close to being selfless. In the third kind where which is called true love or prayer is a mother-child relationship because mother gives birth. God has given mother the privilege to bring forth life. And that is why that, there the dynamics are little different and that gets the closest to being selfless. Still, it also has a trace, trace of selfishness in it, not completely taken away. Um, that is what our scriptures say, but other relationships, whether it is with your spouse, with your kids. Father-kid relationship or others, there will be an element of selfishness there because it is transactional. And for as long as those balances are maintained, um, it continues to flourish. The day that balance starts getting disturbed. Between friends, spouse, things will start getting a little strained out and then you, you are just managing at that point. It's not that it's flowing that relation, you are just managing it smartly because you need to navigate through it. And that is how these worldly relationships are. Nowhere close to love that we talk about, right? This whole industry. Um, if I, if you look at the Bollywood even now, I think now things have started changing. They build that entire life, the, around. What happens from the age of fifteen or twenty up to thirty, thirty-five probably, maybe forty these days. So that, that small window of that you have. Because of your hormones and other things that they just start projecting that as life only, that's not the case. Like they say the initial, when you are past that initial stage of fascination, infatuations that you have, that's when the real thing starts. And then if, unless you are wired or you carry that can, kind of sensibility or purity to know that. It's in giving, one will receive and both ways it can happen. Every relationship is bound to have some kind of a strain, no matter what. That is what our scriptures are telling us, whether you like it or not, believe it or not, that is how it's meant to. You may think, hey, by the way, somebody else, you know, they look pretty cool, nice, everybody will have a strain. That is how the design of this world is. Not that it is supposed to be bad, but it's in giving you receive and none of us have the ability to give. Because we are all operating out of our self-interest. We may be giving and balancing it out with people around who really matter to us, but end of the day, we are inherently. Seeking our own bliss and trying to serve our self-interest in whatever. Investment we make in any relationship and that is why it's bound to get strained some point in time unless we have had this understanding. That it's in giving, one will receive and we, we naturally become compassionate. It's not like you love somebody. Or you become compassionate, that actually defines who you are and that is what our saints say. It can only happen when you carry that purity in your heart. Uh, and not something artificially you can, you know, bring about in your personality. You could do that, but it's just a matter of time before things get sorted out, right? So, alright, so I'll show you a quick video now. I found it for Valentine, um. If you, if you can make out who the guy is, um. I think, uh. Let me show the video I wanted to show. A quick video, love, love on Valentine. Thought I'll show this today. Let me know if you're able to hear. Is audio, is, is it audible?
Yes, Nitinji, we can hear the audio.
Wonderful, I'll play it then.
When you talk about love as a mere attachment. That is no big deal. That is what is happening around the spectrum around the world. However, the second aspect of it is responsibility. To be free is no big deal. To take on a responsibility is a big deal.
I'll start off with the, the most often used word called love. And one of the connotations that the love has is attachment. The other end of the spectrum is detachment or freedom. So my first question is, can we love with freedom? Can we love and at the same time have detachment with no strings attached? So if you could, just let us know on that.
Detachment with no strings attached. Love curbs the freedom, that's what you're trying to say. Whether it is attachment, it's a curb on freedom. So will a sensible, sane person curb their freedom in order to engage in love? However, there is something beyond freedom and that is responsibility. To be free is no big deal. To take on a responsibility is a big deal. People want their rights as citizens. But nobody wants their responsibilities. So similarly, everybody wants their freedom and everybody wants to shirk from responsibilities. But it isn't taking on proper responsibilities. That we please God and we fulfill the purpose of our life. And when you talk about love as a mere attachment. That is no big deal. That is what is happening around the spectrum around the world. Even the animals have that kind of love. That kind of love grows naturally in the parents towards their children, that of attachment. However, the second aspect of it is responsibility. That person you love and who is under your care. You need to have the ability to be able to liberate that person from Maya. Otherwise, don't take on that responsibility. In other words, it's not just mere love, it's discharging of a responsibility. So if somebody says, why should I take on any responsibilities? That is mukti, the desire to be free, no bondage, I want mukti. Beyond mukti is bhakti. Bhakti means that God has given me so many faculties and facilities. And I will utilize them to discharge responsibilities in his service. When there is bodily love, it is mere attachment. Now, if you wish to love from a higher level. You need to learn to first detach and attach your mind to God. And when the mind is attached to God, you will be able to truly love the other. As a part of God, with a sense of responsibility and with an ability to truly give. That will be real love.
Hope you got some of the key messages from this one. It's ability to be free is not a big deal. Taking on a responsibility is a big deal. And we cannot truly love somebody unless we understand the big picture around it. It is a pure attachment, self-seeking. Attachment and nothing more than that. We should have actually, when we are detached, we can truly love somebody. We can actually operate out of compassion. Otherwise, it's a pure attachment and nothing else. That we are doing and that attachment is born out of seeking self-interest from that relationship. Nothing else at that point, very hard hitting, um, and a lot to think about, uh, from that sense. So, let me continue on that. We will have a bit of a discussion as well, but let me continue on what we wanted to cover today. So, getting back, uh, Saint Francis, he said that, oh divine master, grant. That I may not so much seek to be consoled as to console. To be understood as to understand, to be loved as to love, for it is in giving that we receive. It is in pardoning that we are pardoned and it is in dying that we are born to eternal life. And when we look to serve. We don't get heartbroken on seeing others weaknesses. Instead, we see it as our duty to help them overcome their frailties. So, it's the attitude that makes a lot of difference, right? We get upset with people's attitude, but if we are actually operating from a position of compassion with detachment. You would actually think of helping them and serving them as opposed to getting upset with them or hating them. What kind of a person is it? That requires a very high level of spiritual understanding, strength, practice that we would have done. And, and that, that compassion, um, will be born out of detachment, not attachment. Why do we get upset? Because our self-interest is getting impeded. When you are a free bird, you are operating out of that perspective, then you are only trying to help somebody. Like the other day, I was talking to, um, a few participants and. They said even though a lot of wrong things happen to their lives, they just pray for those people. So that they get the required healing around it. Such a big perspective because you understand. Person who hates or troubles you is actually needs a healing as well. But we can only think so clearly, only when we are detached or operating. Out of a higher level of compassion or out of our higher nature, not through our lower nature of. You know, getting upset, irritated or frustrated with somebody. Alright, so let's look at it a little bit more now. If you look at it from the different questions that we have, right? We develop physical intelligence when we are growing up and then. Cognitive intelligence as we go to school, we start to understand, analyze reason. In physical inten- intelligence, we start building standings, walking all those skills and maneuvering our physical body. Furthermore, we start developing emotional intelligence in our teenage years. I hope we do, all of us. Um, and then we start understanding our own feelings, how to manage others' feelings, emotions and all that stuff. And then finally the spiritual intelligence as we become adults. In fact, it is something which is obligatory on us to acquire that. Um, e- even if it's not happening systematically to us. Because it's in serving in personal relationships. See, these are the things that actually hold us in good stead in our lives. If you don't have emotional intelligence or spiritual intelligence, no matter how much IQ we have, it will not serve much purpose in our life. Will be social failures with our relationships, maybe at office and other things as well. So it's the attitude now, this term now it has become, uh. Pretty well known, but when I was doing my masters, this term started cropping up in, in business schools. You know, the servitude, leadership through servitude and serving through position of your leadership. It's like you think about serving and rest will fall in place automatically. Right? When we look at the companies, the other day I was watching Swamiji's lecture, he was saying that. There are three stakeholders, even in corporates. It's not just employee and employer alone. Right? Or, or just thinking about, um, uh, the profit of the shareholders or of the company, if it's a public company. That's not the only dynamic to it. So obviously, that is one important stakeholder entity that is there, the stakeholders, because the end of the day you have to make. That's what you are there in that business for. The second stakeholder is the employee. Are you really taking care of them? So it's in serving them. Are you making sure that you are investing in them so that they grow as well? That is a very important dynamic. The companies who take care of that aspect do well. Companies who are only in the business of making profit, they may have a short term, you know, uh, gains and stuff like that, but. They don't sustain, they're not able to sustain for long. And the third important dynamic is. The, the society or the environment in which they are operating, what are they doing for that, right? For example, in India and Pepsi and these companies, they came. Because they are depleting the groundwater resources and if you start bringing about some ecological imbalances. Again, you are not, you know, investing in something which is sustainable. So then you have to think about things, how you can give it back to the society in which you are operating, maybe through employment. Maybe through, uh, some other means in which you are actually giving back and not just take, take, take. Again, it's, you have to give and take. You at least have to establish give and take in these relationships to be successful. It is very important in these CSR initiatives, uh, they spun out from that as well and, uh. In fact, there was a case study that companies who operate only from a profit-making standpoint without thinking. Uh, the bigger circle around the environment that they are operating in, they, 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 they are setting themselves up for failure in long run. So building a good rapport, creating a good perception, all these things are very, very, very important. It, it's very interesting, in Vishnu Devi, I was hearing that McDonald's, whose signature product is McDo, you know, that. Beef patty burger, they are able to open a restaurant there. Vegetarian and they were able to sell it because of the goodwill that they were able to generate and manage perception around it. So the point here is, it's not about take, take, take. You have, in order for you to survive in this world, you have to develop. A decent, um, what do you call, balance of give and take in whatever relationship you are. Matters to you. So withdrawal deposit, withdrawal deposit. And whenever you make more withdrawals, less deposits, that relationship will start telling you, it's time to start making more withdrawal, uh, deposits now. But beyond that is give, 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 and it doesn't come so easily unless we. Actually purify. So if you look at this graph, it's a symptom of a pure mind. So material love and spiritual love, if you look at it on Y-axis and X. Pure mind, impure mind, these are the four possibilities. So typically in the world, we are in that avoid zone, which we are within impo- impure mind. We have that material love, which is operating in Vayapar and the lust. Um, you know, categories that we spoke about, desired zone is the pure mind and the. Divine love that we are talking about, which can happen only when you start investing in yourself spiritually. Otherwise, you will be contaminated. You may think you are selfless, but you are not, unless you have started purifying your mind. And then it will become part of your intrinsic nature to give, give, give. And in the process, you are anyway going to get, that is the rule of the universe. Whatever you give it, it has to come back. Any comments on that? So with that, I wanted to have a bit of a discussion. These are the two ends of the spectrum that we spoke about. Lust is on the one side, frame is on the other side, right? The ideal state. And the other one is not so ideal state, the intermediate state, that where I think seventy to eighty percent of the world operates is business Vayapar. In all the relationships in this world. Now, this is our world. As you can see, relatives, friends, started with our bodily associates. Let's have a quick discussion on which end of the spectrum our relationships fall under. At work, parents, kids, spouse, relatives, friends. And do we have the capability of truly love without any trace of self-interest? Yes, yes or no, why or why not? With that, I'll open it up and let's get it going. I think I've been speaking for a while, so it's about time to hear from you now.
Itiji, please go ahead.
Radha, radha everyone. Anitji, beautiful class as always. And the video was beautiful too. I hope you would post the link in the interactive group.
I would, I want to tell you in that video, when I look at myself, by the way, that was me in case you could not make out.
Yes, you were.
It seemed like that Mohitji class, if you are not joining, please do and roll for it. It was before I, you know, uh, in fact, I have not done any of the stuff that he talks about, but looks like before and after you do, right?
Okay, surely, surely consider that, I'll consider that.
Please go ahead.
Yes, the first one, Nitinji, as you said yourself. Everything falls under, you know, business Vayapar, give and take, barter, whichever way you want to say it, you, you say it, you know. Give and take, it is slightly sugar coated, you call it Vayapar, it is a bitter pill, but. It is what it is and every relationship I feel does depend upon what goes, comes around. So, uh, that is the first one. And the second one, yes, we do, we do have the capability to love truly without any trace of self-interest. Um, unfortunately, uh, whom we love does not do that. So as you said. You know, sometimes we say, okay, call it the quits. So, but yes, and the mother-son, mother-child relationship of course comes there. There could be some other, I'm trying to think and maybe I'll come to that, but the second type of love also exists and. I think that. He keeps on giving. I mean, does he ever think whether we give him enough, as much enough as he gives us?
Oh, God.
Yes, I mean, he, he keeps, keeps on giving, you know, no matter what, what we do, how wrong we are, whatever we do, whatever we. Don't do for him, his hands are there to bless us, right?
Yes.
So, uh, does he not love us without any self-interest?
Yeah, God, God is a different matter altogether, right? That changes the whole mix, yes. He's Akaran Karun, God is called Akaran Karun. Akaran Karun, so he's merciful, he's all loving. Karan Karun, so he is merciful, he is all loving. We are the ones who has tied his hands, right, at the same time he has to go by his uh. Uh, laws as well, right, he's, he's the grand lawmaker and that is why the beauty of perfection, he cannot be whimsical around it. So, we follow his laws, regardless, he's all loving, he's all compassionate, he's an indulgent father, he keeps on giving us lifetime after lifetime. Provides for our food, air, everything, keeps our body active even when we are sleeping. So, he's a Karan Karun for sure and he's probably in that one-sided relationship for far too long, so that's, that's for sure.
Hmm.
Beautiful point, yeah, Priti ji. It's about reciprocity from our side, which is lacking at this point, yes, let's hear from uh who else is there.
Ramya ji, uh I'll unmute yourself, it would be nice if you could turn on your camera.
Uh, sorry, um.
No worries.
Uh, yeah, so, uh, so I, uh, before answering these questions, I had one question. So, I, I wanted to know, uh, like, I had this question, like, uh.
Sorry to interrupt, her volume is very low, am I right, Nithinji?
I can hear her, but yeah, you can be a little louder, but I can hear you all right, you want, in order.
I'm audible now.
What I heard. What I heard Ramya ji was before answering the question, you would like to answer, ask a question, right?
Yes, yes.
Alright, go ahead.
My question is, can expectations be uh genuine, like, uh, let me take an example, like, uh. Like say, uh, in terms of marriage, a, a, a guy uh meets a girl or a girl meets a guy and. Uh, it does a, a situation like, you know, what do you expect out of a relationship and they say, nothing. I, I'm just independent, I, I don't need you for anything. And there's no basis for love in such relationship, but, but I've seen some places where, you know. Uh, the guy expects the girl to cook for him, the girl expects the guy to uh drive him out and. Uh, and those small, small expectations are the basis for love and uh allow progresses with such expectations, so. What is wrong with having uh this given ticket, it is, if it is a genuine given ticket where. Both are uh loving and taking care of each other, then expectations can be good, right?
That is how world is working out all right, right, which we call love. Where you are able to meet expectations far more than disappointing the other, right, that is why world is maintained. Uh, but yeah, that is conditional, again, that is conditional, it's like. The true love, we will talk about those deeper concepts tomorrow, by the way, so just hold on to that. Is actually devoid of anything at all, it's like Tatsuk Sukhitram. When you are just thinking about, it's like that story of Guruji said, gave a balloon to each one of his disciples, he said, write your name. And put it back there in the room, so everybody goes and puts their balloon back in the room. And then he puts off the light and balloons are coming mingled with each other. And then he says, go and get your balloon and the pandemonium broke. Right, everybody's trying to find there and then balloon starts bursting and all that stuff, so. So then Guruji explains him, it would have been so easy, if, if you simply pick up the balloon, balloon that you are seeing. Look at the name and give it to the person whose name is written on it, and in the process you will get your own balloon back. It's in giving, you will receive, so this guy asked, what if my balloon is burst, he said, no problem, take another one and blow another one, so point here being. When our modus operandi, our mindset is to take. And then I'll give, you make it conditional, it's just a matter of time before the friction will be introduced. That is still a very tenuous bond you are building, which can break anytime. But when it's only about giving and it can happen in some relationships, then it will be sustained for long, think about it in both cases. I will do that Leela again, it's a beautiful concept. Uh, the Jhulan Leela game, it, it, it drives home the point really beautifully, maybe tomorrow we'll do that. How in giving, you, you get much more than you would have otherwise gotten, when you think you are going to hold off. To happiness or extracted from something, in giving you catch much more than that, but then. Obviously, uh, doesn't work unless two people are like that, right, but for us. In order to progress in our journey, we still have to develop that attitude, especially towards God and world, we have to be smart. We have to navigate and manage it with deposits and withdrawals. Because otherwise you might be taken for a ride, right, if the other person is not there, but yeah, it's a fair point, that is how world operates actually. Alright, let's hear from other hands, any new names, then we can call them up.
Yes, uh, I'll give it to Sandhya ji, go ahead, Sandhya ji.
Radha, radha. Uh, first of all, answer to the first question, I mean, in my opinion, as you said. The relationship with parents, but I would also like to point out, like, based upon my experience that. Mother-child love as well as I feel that father-child love also get quite close to being selfless as, I mean.
Relatively, yes, in.
As compared to the other.
Very, parents is definitely, as compared to other relationships, it will always be there, but I'm just telling you the epitome. Right, what is the perfection and then slightly less than perfection in this material world is mother-child and then obviously father and then you can bring in your. Closest cousin or sibling, yeah, I mean, that hierarchy you can, but nothing is devoid of self-interest, that has to be understood, our scriptures tell us very clearly. Yeah, good point.
Yeah, so that is, um, like, so. Any love, any of the kinds that you described involves two individuals, so, um. Is it possible in the material world to have a love in which both the individuals are only giving?
Uh, yes, in movies, yes. Both individuals have to be super um mature, sensible. And on the spiritual path, then it is possible, otherwise not possible, materially not possible. Because your mind will be tainted with those three gunas and they will have their play, those, they will manifest in form of. Self-interest, way of varying degrees, not possible. See, that's the beauty of our scriptures, they tell you very exactly how your mind is going to, nothing second guessing. Not possible, if somebody says, no, we are doing it, they're showing it in their picture on Instagram or Facebook, no. It's a hoax, not possible, okay, you can just take that stamp, not possible. Unless they are spiritually advanced and they have a very clear understanding that it's possible. Otherwise, no, there will be.
Thank you, yeah, Rahul ji, please go ahead.
Radha, radha. Radha, radha Rahul ji.
I think talking about the first question, probably all the relationships fall under that category of Vipar or business, the proportion will vary.
Very true.
Uh, second question, I think unless a person is God-realized. Probably he will have some kind of self-interest in anything, whatever they are trying to do in the back of the mind, because. Maharaj is explained in one of his discourses that the definition of prayer is Anirvachini. It cannot be actually spoken easily and he tells. Gud Rahitam, Kamna Rahitam and then Prati. Shalam Vardhanam.
Vardhanam, yeah.
That is the epitome, so. I think all those three qualities might be impossible unless a person is God-realized.
Good Rahitam means you don't look at the attributes of that person. It, this, you don't like Krishna, you don't look at, you know, his god or some power. It's without, and tomorrow we will get into the deeper concept, Madhurre Bhav, what are the possibilities for Madhurre Bhav and. It's, it's pretty mind-blowing concept, so we will talk about it tomorrow, but I thought we'll set the base. For the love part of it, at least the material love, but yeah, great point, Rahul ji, looks like you've been listening to a lot of discourses, so. Wonderful. Thank you, let's quickly.
Thank you, Rahul ji, Padma ji, please go ahead.
Radha, radha. So. Um, we all agree, right, what we are talking about is that. That pure idealistic spiritual love that we are talking about, but. Um, even to get there, I think, um, our perception and understanding. Has to be really solid in the materialistic relationship itself, at least if you accept. What is not true love, then you are willing to open up your mind and heart to where you are supposed to reach spiritually. So, I think that awareness of, let's figure this out here in these relationships, that is number one. So, the three different phases that you are talking about, I think every relationship goes through that, not the last part where there is no. Um, um aspiration or expecting, but at least there is an attempt, you know, many relationships. They might be attempting to reach there if they are both spiritually, spiritually inclined, right, and there is a combination of that and mostly we are. Either in the first one or in the second one, um. Because every relationship, um, whether we, whether we are thinking from a relationship point of view or not. We are conditioned in our own minds that we have boundaries and limitations. And, and our own expectations and definitions of what freedom means. The freedom that we seek within that relationships, that boundaries that we have in our mind. That somebody else should not cross those boundaries, whether it is any kind of thing, if I have to give an example. Like, um, the boundaries that we might draw within our own mind, you know, somebody, we don't want other person, even if it's a spouse. We, we don't want them to hurt us physically, we don't want them to hurt us emotionally. So, there are boundaries that we draw within our mind, within that relationship, when we are getting into that relationship. Where we have boundaries and we define our own limits of freedom, so when the relationship is. Based on that, of course, there is going to be expectations, of course, when we have expectations, there are going to be disappointments. So, that in itself tells us that, you know, it is an interdependent thing, it's not a, a, a relationship which is, there is no. That, that is truly based on selfless love, um. And, and the other thing that I've been thinking is, um, even to attempt for us, yeah. I'll put this on the.
I know we have ten, five is the hard stop for Amutavan ji, so. Three hundred more seconds, but beautiful point, Padma ji, what you spoke about, boundaries is a very important thing in every relationship. Because it is transactional, inherently transactional, defining boundaries is very important. And that is where the healthy relationship comes into picture, even if you look at our body parts, they have healthy boundaries between them, right, if our. Organs do not have a boundary with our stomach, the acid will take it off, right? So, in everything, there is a healthy boundary, even if they like the mother takes care of the food of the kid, he has to put the laundry. Back in his washing machine, right, and then if the wife says, no, you come back, you're working late today, you have to take me out or you. So then that's where we have to start thinking, what are the healthy boundaries in our relationship and then if two people are sensible, you can make it work. Otherwise, those friction points will keep on increasing and it's just a matter of time before it becomes, you know, flashing flashpoint. So, the relate, see, the, the fact that we don't have the Siddhis to read each other's mind is a huge blessing. If everybody could read each other's mind, there would be war in the world, okay. Couple would be fighting and they'll finish each other off. So, it's only with sensibilities and the certain, certain enforced constraints that God has imposed upon us, we are able to live properly. And we have to continue doing that for as long as we don't become God-realized, because that's only when we can actually. Um, you know, operate at a higher level which is required of us. But until then, these kind of things will there and we just have to learn to navigate it smartly with proper knowledge. Alright, one minute each, I can see three hands, that way it will take us to ten minutes, three, and then Amutavan ji is going to do two, two-minute announcement and will be done.
Dinesh Anand ji, radha, radha, you can unmute yourself.
Ahurre Bhav, okay, so please do attend, we'll go very deep into the philosophy tomorrow. Whether you understand it or not, okay, I don't care, but we will go really. I was kidding, we'll make it easy, yes, Dinesh ji, please go ahead.
Yeah, radha, radha, first of all, thank you for such an awesome information. Um, so, my understanding and my takeaway today is, um, anything that takes us close to God is a. True or true prayer, anything that doesn't take us close to God, God is not. It's what my takeaways today, um, it may be a, yeah, mother and son, I mean, Kunti and Karna, right? And there is a lot of other stories for other type of relations, husband and wife, I mean, there are many, uh, many disasters with other relationship. The extreme and the best one is mother and kid, which we know, there are also some faults, right, from our scriptures, we know.
Yeah.
But I have never heard anything that with God, it, it ended up with a disaster, not even a single story.
Never, never happened, great point. Very true.
Thank you, Dinesh.
Yeah, this is clear that we have invested in this world so many times, infinite lifetimes, we have been gambling on this world. And people around us, right, material relationships, just gamble once on God and see what happens. Even the big gamblers, they play satta in their life, so why not gamble on God for a change and see what happens? See, we've been gambling on all these relations that they're going to give me happiness, they're going to give me happiness one day. Uh, it's like a beggar asking another beggar for money, it's never going to happen. Uh, and we'll keep on meeting with disappointment, but they say then Maharaj used to say that, why don't you gamble on God for a change? What happened, worst case scenario, what will happen, default world is anyway there, right, for you, it's not going to run away anywhere.
I see a new name, Garini ji. Radha, radha.
Yes.
I'm not able to, I cannot hear them, so let me give it to Smitha, Smitha Hegdeji, radha, radha, thank you for waiting.
To begin that, uh, the word of, uh, love has no, uh, exact translation in English. But it is prema and then it is bhakti. Um, uh, the, the right word if I can translate is Anuraga. Which, uh, if I divide the word, it is Anu and Raga, Anu is the prefix. And Raga, all of you know is the desire. So, two words desire, so the love which we are, uh, people are looking at around, as you quoted Bollywood and other places like people assume. Is Anuraga, that is thing which is leading us to the dis- uh, with towards desire, which we have to give up, so, uh. Like what I have understood, seeing my parents being married for fifty years, it was like. They got into a, a, a thing called marriage where people were told that they are pooraka, that is, they are. Uh, they are trying to, um, fill, fulfill the commitments for each other, then slowly it led to prema. Then towards the bhakti, I think the bhakti is the ultimate love, uh, the bhakti is the right word where, um. Uh, which, which perfectly describes love and, uh. Sorry, I'm not able to put my words into proper, uh, sentences. Uh, so I feel that prema develops when either with a relationship, relationship between husband and wife. Or relationship between mother and daughter, mother and son, father and daughter and son as well. Um, then the ultimate thing is the bhakti, bhakti is where the selfless love, the love which. We, the true love which we think about as that selfless love is bhakti. This is what I feel.
No, great point, very true, bhakti will, will be a stepping stone for us to actually inculcate or develop true love, so if you look at this one. Unless you have a pure mind, you cannot really have true love or. Or the, the love that we are talking about, it's just a direct function of a pure mind. I'll go on to say, Swamiji gives a beautiful example, your happiness, the knowledge and the love. It's a direct relationship with the purity of our mind. The more you appear, your mind is, the more happier you will feel, the more pure your mind is, the more love, loving. Compassionate it would be and more purer your mind is, the more knowledge will start sticking in and start revealing itself, it's a direct function of a pure mind. And how do you purify your mind? By attaching it to your relatives, friends and all, material people know. That is a simulation for you to, for something higher, the only two pure things in this world is God and saints. So, that is only simple formula, purify your mind, everything will start falling into place, very simple. In fact, the only agenda of life is Antakaran Shuddhi, as per our scriptures, rest all is self-created agendas, we have created, I have to do this, I have to do that. There is no other agenda of life other than purifying our Antakaran, that is what God has sent us here for. Nothing else, we can use other faculties that are endowed to us. As a simulation or as a stepping stone for something higher, but if you are hung up in just playing with those things and giving it a lot of mind space. And finally depart from this world after paying EMIs. What a waste, right, it's like somebody gave you a Jaguar and all you did, it, with it was. You know, do groceries, so.
Anuputna ji, thank you for waiting, please go ahead.
Yes, I'll do.
Okay.
One, one minute. Promise Amut. You did three more minutes, okay, so.
Okay, I just wanted to say that even with parents, you know. They, they, they are ready to give selfless love and everything, but many times there is an expectation. That you have to take care of them, back of their mind, it is there, it is not, uh, really, you know. I, almost like give and take only, only with God, you know, even though we don't even think of him many days, you know. Days goes, still he is giving all the things that we need and he is Karan Karun. But that is not there, you know, many times we think parents love with maybe selfless. But back of mind or even society makes you feel that you had to, you know, earn your love and give it back to them or something. Even many mothers, they say, oh, I carried you for nine months and it is almost like blackmail, you know. So, I think only God's love is the, you know, uh, really, uh, he is. You know, carelessly merciful.
Very true, thank you very much, yes, Maharaj, very true, please fill out that in Nest tracker as well and yes. Very true. Thank you very much. Yes, very true. Please fill out that tennis tracker as well and yes, you really said, God is a Karan Karun. Rest all is conditional, some kind of expectation is always there. They may be giving more, expecting less, that is, that can happen, but that expectation is always there, because scriptures are telling us, right? We cannot go against scriptures to say, no, I my 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 relatives and my people and folks are exception to the rule, no, not possible. Because that is who, how we are, so. Great point. Last one, do we have time? Otherwise, Amutavani J over to your announcements and then we can do our closing prayers. Please do fill out that tennis tracker in the meantime. Uh and we'll continue our conversation on Madhurabha tomorrow.
Yes, that announcement tracker has been posted, so please do put in your feedbacks. And the uh recitation session that will be, that will be starting on Friday, even that link has been posted, so please do take a moment to see that. Anitha J, that's of the announcements, you can now
Okay.
Do the course lesson.
Sharm J, Rahul J, Sandhya J and whoever and Padma J for keeping your videos on. Uh makes me feel that we have, I have good company today.
Me also.
Who else? Who else?
Me.
Put the one is I. Yes, Amutavani J as well, yes, thank you. Um yeah, it's good actually, if you, and all of you can turn it off time to time, it's always good. All right, so let's do our closing prayers and then we'll continue our discussion tomorrow. Om Sarve Bhavantu Sukhinaha, Sarve Santu Niramaya. Sarve Bhadrani Pashantu, Maakashchituk Bhagavate. Om Shanti, Shanti, Shanti. Thank you, everybody. Have a very nice Valentine's, don't pick up a fight with your better half today, okay? Just because now you've known that everybody is selfish, so are we, so let's continue to operate that we do, nothing changes fundamentally, okay? It's just the concept. All right, Radha Radha, good night, good day.
Thank you, everyone. Yes. I will be closing the bridge now, thank you, everyone.